Good evening, and I'm calling to order the meeting of the Pittsburgh Board of Citizens Monday, June 24th, 2019. We will open our meeting with a moment of silence. This evening we have a potential Eagle Scout, Evan Crouch, who will lead us in the pledge. And so Evan, if you will come forward and...
We just hear the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Evan has thirty-five merit badges, and you only need to have twenty-one to qualify for Eagle Scout. And he and I just finished an interview in the office. Evan is particularly interested in the idea of ridging ourselves of plastic bags in the grocery store. And so we had a very good discussion of that, and one of the things that Evan wants to do is to bring awareness to that issue. And so I'd like to congratulate him, and he and I are going to work together on a few projects to hopefully get that accomplished here at Pittsburgh. Thank you, Evan. You have your agenda before you, and is there a motion to be made either to approve the agenda, or to postpone an item, or to modify the agenda?
I think motion to approve with the modifications to the minutes that Deb and I have made and that are at our tables.
All right. As to the regular agenda, a motion to approve, and as to the consent agenda, a motion to approve with edits that are at our desk from the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, a motion carries. Next, we'll go into public hearing with respect to an annexation request from Chatham Concrete. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
Uh-huh.
Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Michael Fieltta. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, a motion carries. Thank you. Victoria Bailiff, you will be leading us in this discussion.
Thank you. We have annexation 2019-02. Chatham Concrete LLC has proposed the annexation of ten point seven five acres located on Monture Pittsburgh Road along the eastern side of Turkey Creek. The parcel is zoned into heavy industrial and is currently vacant. The recommendation is to hold the public hearing for the annexation.
And we have three people who have signed up to be heard tonight on this annexation request, the first of whom is Edward Fowler. If you'd come to the audience, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think I wasn't familiar with this. This is my first public hearing speaking at. We've all been up here before and talked about the opposition to the Chatham Concrete plant. I was just curious if I could ask, is there anybody here from Chatham Concrete tonight that is present?
No, the planning department is just in.
No, okay. Just curious. So, a couple of things, just to rehash. I just had a number of things sent out. One was the first page on that is the main premise for the petition signed by two hundred and forty-four residents in a hundred and ninety-two housing community in Potterstone Village, showing objection to the approval of bringing in the concrete plant. There was a number of bullet points on it. Again, this is, again, a couple of the things that were picked out of the zoning ordinance that we were focusing on, such as the language excluding from this district to those of industries which are noxious by their emission of smoke, dust, fumes, glare, noise, and vibration, and those industries which deal primarily in hazardous products. We've submitted on prior meetings showing evidence of, you know, the concrete plants being very hazardous with the dust particles and that, and I think it's pretty obvious about the noise levels. We're already here in Capital Concrete Plant at six o'clock in the morning with the backup trucks and the hum and that of the turning concrete trucks, even with the buffer that's still there before the four acres of trees are potentially removed. Another uncovering, which was on page thirty-one on the next page, stating that the following industrial uses shall not be allowed included cement. And in that, there again is another reference to any other use which is noxious or offensive by reason of vibration or emission of dust, odor, smoke, gas, or noise. Again, hitting on a number of cylinders on that, which basically defines the operation. I didn't bring the video today, and I think that's probably why Jeff Jones already saw a portion of the video of a concrete plant next door to where I work. The Pittsburgh Potterstone Village HOA Board got together two weeks ago, and we decided to retain an attorney to review the recent findings and the older findings, and to do a complete review of the town ordinance, with some focus on these two findings here, and give us an opinion. We're waiting on that opinion. Sorry, we didn't have it today. We were hoping to have him ready to speak and address the group, but hopefully we'll get an opportunity as well. I don't think that really impacts the annexation piece so much, but it is on our agenda. This is more just a plea to everybody in the room whose role we feel is a primary responsibility to represent the citizens of our town, and really not the deep pockets of heavy industry. Again, the two hundred and forty-four signatures and more coming, which I could deliver at a later date, you know, we're pleading with anybody here who's making this decision to have the intestinal fortitude to do something. I don't know what can be done at this stage in the game, but after this goes through, there's another eighty-two acres that'll be in question as well along Monqueer Road. Many of those eighty-two acres, again, are just going to go further up and be adjacent to other homes in the community. So it's just not a one shot all get over on this. We're looking at doing something, you know, having the host put a decline, the application is number one. What can you do? Maybe we can get a green space that further adds to the buffer all along the area that touches upon our homes. Again, I've tried to reach out to the applicant, and I've actually talked to the property owner to find alternatives, such as moving this plant down the road, but that doesn't circumvent what may happen, you know, down the road when the next business comes in. We're just pleading with everybody to see if there's some kind of go-between to do something. You know, I don't know what the chances are of getting, we as the ad hoc committee feel that, you know, the town planner has made pretty clear that, you know, this is going to happen in the meetings that we've had there. And we then look to, is there anything else we can do to be good neighbors? Can we have a concrete company put up a buffer wall, such as you see on highways? And that is one idea. That would really show a membership of good faith on both sides, just to mitigate the noise and the dust abatement as well. There are a couple of people, again, in the room that have people with serious metal conditions with this plant right adjacent to their properties. I'm sad to report, if you saw the eyewitness news clip a while back, I think many of you might have seen it, where they came in and they interviewed one of our, you know, residents who is very good friends with us, and I'm really sad to hear that they're convinced that this is going to happen, and they just bought a house and they're moving out. This is the second such family that's moved out because of this. They want to stay ahead of it before they have to divulge to any potential buyers that there's a concrete plant that might drive their home values down as well. Again, anything that you can show that you really care more about your constituents who voted you in than about big business and the deep pockets is what we're looking for, we're making an appeal to see if anything can be done. I'm willing to be an intermediary, or, you know, other folks that are on the committee, if I'm not available, to try to negotiate something, you know, in the spirit of being a good neighbor if this thing is going to go through. Again, you know, I'm not going to harp on the fact that we think it's just common sense when you read some of these things that talk to other concrete plants and say it's crazy to move a concrete plant so close to, I think it's the second largest community within the town. And the objections remain the same. We also have another petition that talks about alternatives that we can present to you at the next meeting, if not ready now. But it's the same signatures, and actually a few people felt more comfortable signing that petition because, yeah, quite honestly, they've been afraid of getting sued if they're related to this action, and prevent the sale, prevent the tortoise sale, go through. So, anything that can be done, I don't know what the issues are, I'm not prepared to talk about what annexation does. I assume it gives them water access, and it gives them access to bring revenue into the town of Pittsburgh. Again, back to the comment, constituents first, and, you know, is what we hope, is what each of you members here that are voting on this will remember that that is what we feel is the primary responsibility to represent the community and do the right thing. Again, if we can do something at this point, that's what we're asking. And we're willing to talk about alternatives and working together if we can do that. I haven't given up on that. That's about all that is.
Thank you, Reverend Farrow.
I have a question. You spoke about a video that, is that something that is digital? Is that something you could share with commissioners?
Actually, Jeff Jones saw it. It's a video of the concrete plant right next door to where I work, S.T. Wooton, right there on sixty-four. And it's got, the amount of noise, it's overwhelming, the backup noise coming through, the dust, people actually park on the opposite end of the parking lot to avoid the dust particles on their car. I mean, these are just facts, and I could, I could have my son, I'm not as good with that stuff, maybe put a video together and share it with you next time, if that helps.
Did you make it to share it with us, but I don't know if we'll have a lot of trouble?
It's on my phone, I'd have to find it. I'm not prepared at the moment, but if you want me to show it to you later as we get to the next stage, I'll try to pull it up. You know, you can run it through there and get the audio on there. The audio is probably the most impressive part of it. I brought my little boombox to exactly find out what it is. I'm a DJ too on the side, so I can bring in the whole sound system if you want total effects. But then again, for people that have family in the community, for those that are here to serve the public and constituents, again, making a mass appeal to see what can be done. Thank you for the opportunity, I really appreciate it.
You can mail that video to us, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I will do that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kevin Cox.
I don't want to take up a lot of time. I'm Kevin Cox, I'm actually with Capital Ready Mix. And we're aware, and they were coming in, and I would like to extend an offer, I know they're an outside company, and I don't know their intentions, but I believe they're also subcontractors and finishers. So they're intent maybe to provide concrete for the concrete jobs that they're supplying. We would be more than happy to load their trucks or even supply them with the concrete. When we put up our plan, we took a couple of things into consideration. One, air-controlled plants make a lot of noise, so we did electric-controlled plant, no gates, to try to limit the noise. We also put our plant back with a barrier of the buildings to try to reduce the noise and the truck flow. The property across the street, we didn't have that area just because of that, because of any of the facts of it. So we would just like to extend to Chatham Concrete, if that's what they were lacking, just to load their trucks out of our plant. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the last speaker here at the public hearing is Charlie Perkins.
I live at number forty, I think it is, right there. So, I've spoken and kind of raised my voice a few times just on the proposed plant. And, look, I'm just speaking for basically one of the four homes that are going to be impacted directly from this. I think that the growth of this community is very exciting. I actually am in full support of everything that's going on. And I would actually be okay, and I'm really interested in learning more about even what you're coming to say. I just can't get over the fact that I'm going to be potentially looking in the backyard of a big cement drain. I can't get over the fact that, like, having this much land, and I get access to water, and I get, you know, be able to get to that more quickly, it's going to save money. Cool. I mean, I get all of that. I just think that, to some of what Ed's passionate plea was, don't want to repeat all the myriad of facts that he got. This is an opportunity to set a precedent, because we're going to be looking at the next five to seven to nine homes the next time nine acres comes up. Then you're going to have the next five to seven to nine homes the next time nine more, ten more acres comes up. So we set a precedent now, we, the community, with Chatham Concrete, with the help of Capital. Look, you know, I think revenue is good. There are a lot of things that this community needs better with. So if this annexation provides opportunity for the town, I think it makes sense. But I also think that by doing this, let's establish something that makes sense for everybody, as I said last time. You guys have inherited some, pardon the expression, plug your earmuffs, S.H. you-know-what from decisions that were made that made no sense. No sense in that, hey, I'm going to put up one hundred and ninety-five home subdivision, what about this land behind it? It's heavy industrial. Okay, well, we should really make sure that that's known to everybody. Really wasn't. Hey, you know, we should be able to do things that allow for this green space. Well, that's the county land, not the town, so there's nothing we can do. So it's kind of kicking it all around, and, look, you know, we just, we are town residents. So, again, I'm not trying to say that we're turning revenue, turning opportunity, turning Chatham Park into something that can or can't be. This, if it makes sense, hey, I'm all for capitalism, but you've just got to think about some of the capitalism that these five homes and the next twenty-five or thirty are thinking about too, which is their longevity, both physically as well as financially. So, again, anything that can be done, yes, would love to work with you all, would love to figure out how, in the spirit of partnering together, we can start to make it real. You know, I'll have you all over with Chatham Concrete, we can barbecue and just say, really, you're going to, like, be backing your cement truck up? Capital is actually not that bad. It's not that loud. I mean, yeah, you can hear it, but you can hear power air brakes going down Pittsburgh Monqueer. You can hear Ninjas and Harleys and everything else. So, again, there are ways that we can all work together, but it just doesn't seem like they, one, want to work with us, and that the town really cares about really what we're here about. So, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Charlie Perkins. Is there no further questions for Victoria Bailiff? And is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
Questions on board? Can we do that?
I don't have questions.
So, I had hoped that the applicant would be coming, because I do have questions for Mr. Duncanis. And I really, I think this board needs to understand better why they've chosen this particular site.
He will be present to answer questions when the site plan actually comes before you.
So, can the staff offer insights?
No.
Why this site? Have you asked?
Not at the time to ask that question. It is not. It is not the staff's responsibility to pick and choose and ask that question of property owners. He's a property owner. He wishes to be Zella. As any property owner may wish to build a home, build a shed, build a deck. Our job is to go through and technically review those plans. That's what we're doing. Our job is not to ask those questions. Why did you pick here and not somewhere else? That is my thought. It's all correctly, and he is going to review property. This is about the annexation.
Understood. But I keep getting this question, and I don't have an answer for it.
And he will be here to answer that.
Do you have a question on the, perhaps, that's appropriate for why this property? Is this in line with land use?
Yes.
Okay. The copy that we have, and even I think that copy is, got some arrows pointing to, I think lines are missing, and, you know, says easement line for future sewer utility.
No, they just say step line.
Yeah. I'm just curious, is that easement, can I imagine that easement? Is it where the arrow is pointing to, and then all the way to the property line? If it's that big?
It's a twenty-foot width.
That's wide. Okay, so.
Where's the space line? Is it about twenty feet?
Okay, okay. So it's just twenty foot wide?
If you look at the digital copy, hopefully it should show up if you want to look online.
Okay.
It shows up on my computer screen, which is, I didn't think there was a problem.
Okay. I just was wondering if it was that entire swath of land to the property line that created easement, but it's just twenty foot wide?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's twenty foot, it's actually twenty feet.
And what would be the buffer requirement between M2 and residential?
Well, the riparian buffer is actually bigger than what's required between, they would be having to meet a side setback in M2, which I believe is twenty feet off the side. They are required to do screening. They would be required to do the highest level of screening, which is very dense. A lot of that's going to be able to be met by the existing vegetation within the riparian buffer, but what if staff goes out there and there's a huge hole, then we will require them to plant, replant, so it meets the screening.
And the riparian buffer is fifty feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Does that really help the job?
The riparian buffer is fifty feet, but the flood plain, as you can see, it actually goes out further than that in most places, and the plant will be further back than that.
So it could be access flood line plane?
Fifty feet would be closer to the property.
For the most part, the flood plain is probably restricted.
So they could seal that flood type?
No.
And they can or they can't go in?
Not without special permit, maybe so.
So they're going to...
So that entire area is the flood plain, right there, is that correct?
This, the whole line?
Right. All that line.
So you can't, you can't build the whole area.
You cannot do that.
There is a segment again, because of the flood.
Okay. But they can make temporary improvements for the structure?
Depending upon what...
When you speak, if you could either speak louder or come up to, because I think folks in the back are really interested.
There are limited things that can be done in the flood plain, so any encouragement into that would require approvals, that may, I'm sure, there is.
So that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be an undisturbed buffer, or a natural area, or how would you characterize it for the folks that are adjacent to it?
We have two different ordinances that regulate this area. One is a buffer ordinance, and there are specific uses that are, that allow impacts in the buffer. You must meet the criteria in order to impact, you have to have a buffer authorization. There are things like sewer crossings, ringway paths, and things like that. For the most part, we require people to stay out of those areas. The flood plain is more restrictive, and there are less things that are allowed. If there is an impact to any area that's within the flood plain, it requires an approval process, and if it starts to impact the flood plain, the flood zone, then it may require additional approvals through FEMA. So it is a much more involved process for any impact in that area. So, from a staff perspective, we're going to encourage people to stay completely out of it and keep it undisturbed if at all possible.
So that would include, from the property line with, from Potterstone Village all the way to that line?
All the way to that line.
So that, all that area would be almost like, not an official buffer, but there would not be the concrete plant with that?
And with the stream runs roughly across this property line, and so there's a fifty-foot buffer that is spring buffer, and then there's flood plain that, in some cases, is further, and some places is probably close to the flood path. But, yeah, this would be the line that I believe is the most restrictive of the things.
People on the northeastern corner are going to be closer, potentially.
Potentially, they're a little bit closer than that area.
But also on the residential lots is flood plain as well, that has the same restrictions.
And, um, stream buffer as well.
I know that this is just an annexation, but maybe Mr. Cox could, you said something regarding the electrical or electronic badge versus the air badge?
Yes, sir.
Could you kind of go over that real quickly? Like I said, I know this is just on annexation, but I, I'm a little confusing.
Yeah. It's one of those easier to show kind of things. But, so a traditional ready-mix plant has overhead bins for stores that drops your air into a scale. All this is done with a series of air gates. So, you know, the actuator opens the gate using air.
Pneumatic.
Pneumatic, there you go. So we, what we've done is, we bought a plant that's electric, so it runs off of belts that are quiet, there's no gates. It's all electric, whereas they're weighing up on the belts themselves and then into the trucks. So really what you hear is the truck charging out. And I don't have to tell the folks around here that ready-mix trucks are pretty loud, any commercial truck is pretty loud. That being said, we set the plant down, obviously the poultry plant is there, we set it on the other side of the building, download, to try to limit the noise, the dust, everything that the gentleman was speaking about earlier, because we were trying to do the right thing where we were. And we're local, we're here to be here, we're not, we're not coming in to do a job and give back out. I mean, we're small business, we're not a national company, we're just, we're just everyday people, you know? So we're not in other states, we're not in most of them. But what I was really asking is, my understanding, they're, you know, the form-finish company, and if they're coming in to work on Chatham Park, we, you know, we won't extend the offload of their trucks out of our plant. It'll, kind of limit all this all the way around, and we'd be more than happy and more than willing to do it. So, really, to answer your question, it's quieter, and I'd be more than happy to show you the difference between them, but you don't... you the difference between them, but you don't have the banging of the gates. And it's very loud for a ready-mix plant operating. You don't have that type of airbrush running through. It's very limited, it's very quiet, the most you hear is the trucks charging out.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, if there are not further questions, then we will.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to speak a little bit more, if you will, about this floodplain area. Approximately, how large is this one? Can you tell from?
I mean, it's where the line is.
But I mean, approximately, how many feet approximately are, you have no idea right now?
Without air problems.
Okay, all right.
It's more than 50 feet.
More than 50 feet? And generally, you said, if there, if someone's going to, something's going to be done in the floodplain, you have to get FEMA.
But they have to meet, there's a provision for this, and there's criteria about what can be done. It cannot impact the flood, it's raining in that area, disturbing that area. Removing trees that fall down, like things like that can happen, but disturbing it will affect the floodplain. So those are the things we have to do.
So basically, buildings would not be allowed?
No structures would be allowed.
Okay.
No parking lot, no curvy surface. I mean, occasionally, even, during, most of the time they require entry walk-in, they will allow like a asphalt surface, but it can be less impact on that area. It's a very minimal, you know, that can be done in that.
And do we know why, since we don't know why they chose this site, do we know why they want to be annexed?
In regards to noise, it would suit the town, that we, if they were in our town limits, we could enforce our code of ordinances, which does include a noise warning.
Can you talk about, does staff do it for the highest level of screening? Can you describe for people here what that is? Can you describe the screening that would be required?
The screening that's required is supposed to be opaque up to a height of six feet with intermittent visual obstructions up to a height of 20 feet. So basically, that buffer is probably going to be better than whatever they would plant. So like I said, once we go out to inspect it, if there are any gaps, then staff would ask them to replant, replant some more. And Ms. Baldwin's question, it looks like these times of survey I have is approximately 150 at its widest point, floodplain to the property line, and about 50 at its smallest, as approximately.
Thank you. Thank you, both.
Are we ready to move on, or is that further question? Is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Michael Fialco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor of proceeding to take anything aye?
Right.
Those opposed, motion carries in hand, please. The next matter on our agenda are citizens' public expression speakers, and there are three people signed up tonight. One, our first person is Lisa Meeker. These three speakers are speaking on the concrete plant, and we have in the past heard people, when they spoke on an agenda item, is that one of the boards can do that part? Lisa Meeker. We are doing three minutes.
I don't think I need three minutes. I just want to reiterate, I was before you last year, and I do have big concerns about having a concrete plant so close to our neighborhood. One of the big reasons is that I feel that there are really potential health issues that are, that could occur because of all of the particulate, and, you know, it's close to a community where there's children, there's elderly, it's not far from an elementary or middle school, and I just feel like the incidences of asthma could increase. My husband is a lung transplant recipient, and, you know, higher levels of particulate could affect his lung transplant, and also could drive him into rejection. And I just, knowing that idiopathic lung diseases, nobody knows what causes these things, but the more that you introduce into your lungs, it goes in, it doesn't come out, and those fine particles are just shredding your lungs. So I just really have serious concerns about the health issues, and along with all the other issues, the noise and dust and everything else. So anyway, I just wanted to reiterate my concerns for that, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa Meeker. Next speaker is Ed Fowler.
I was going to pass, but a question that John Bonnet raised of the town planner is one that I'd like to probe or at least comment on. I don't know if this is a question and answer period, but is Mr. Stan Kunis aware, let me back up, a few meetings ago, Jay Farrell, and I believe was sanctioned by the town commissioners, to approach the property owner and the applicant on an idea of possibly moving it to another location. That being said, I'm just curious with the comment that I just heard, you know, the sincerity of that attempt, and during that discussion, was it brought up, was Frank Stan Kunis even aware of the fact that there's 244 signatures opposing this? Was there any discussion about noise, the fact that people are talking about buying decibel meter instruments too? I just, this is what bothers me. I don't know if he is aware of the outcome. I know he saw the clip on TV, and really, if you ever watched it, it really didn't bring up any of these, these issues at that point. So, I mean, I can't understand how a principal body in the planning board can ignore the obvious contradictions in the zoning ordinance itself, two of which we outlined today. These are monumental, and there are numerous other ones as well, and I just can't understand how you can reach the opinion that this is okay. You know, when you read through this, there are too many contradictions in this. This is not about saving face, Jeff Jones, this is about doing the right thing, finding that. I don't want to, you know, be dealing with people who have already made up their mind, which it has seemed from the beginning, and I know that you don't, this decision comes up here, but we as a group don't feel that the effort was ever truly made, the communications that were promised, such as when the next meeting is. I found out about this meeting through somebody through the green door or whatever, otherwise I probably would have missed it. And, you know, it's just something that I feel I have to get off my chest and comment on, you know? Somebody who doesn't live in the community, who is working on a salary, representing this, this attitude, just doesn't make any sense to me, and I just want to comment on that. I'm not really looking for a direct answer, but could you find out? I don't see why we couldn't find out. If you don't want to find out, I'll call Frank myself and find out. Why did he choose this property? You know, if I can't get in touch with him, I would only ask to give me a phone number so I can have that conversation and make him aware of all the points that he may not be aware of. I don't know, I don't want to assume. You know, when we talked to people at another concrete plant, they said, this is crazy, I would never, ever want to put a concrete plant in that location on top of another one, which I am very excited about, the comments here from Capital Concrete, I'm very excited about that. Would like to pursue that also as another alternative. That's the most exciting thing I've heard tonight. I did have to comment on, on that, and if you want to have an opportunity to reply and answer any of those statements or questions, please do so. Mr. Jones.
I don't know if it would be appropriate for staff to address questions. This is a time for your public expression, and I think that one of the things that could happen as a result is further exploring explorations, and that perhaps we'd all come back at the next meeting more, better educated, and about, about the issues that you raised. But I don't think it was, it would be appropriate to, to have staff respond directly.
Yeah, I don't know when we get, do we wait until the deal is almost done and then find out if this is an opportunity to speak and get answers to these things? That's too late. It's too far along at that point. I, you know, I don't understand the process in that we're up here speaking, we're not getting feedback. I've got feedback from a couple of you, which I really appreciate, but I have no idea where everybody sits on this thing so far, and it is frustrating. It is frustrating not to know. I've always said, oh, wait, we've got plenty of time. I feel like, why don't you wait until persons come in here and it's all long, it's a moving train that can't be stopped? That's just the way we feel as a community. And, and that's just something I just had to echo, sorry, I had to get off my chest, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. I understand what people's roles are in that, but also just question how you can ignore the obvious contradictions, even Mr. Messick, how can you, how can you ignore those obvious contradictions that are in the zoning ordinance itself? How can you? What is the explanation for it's okay, it's approved? We'd like to hear that. Maybe we can get that question answered at the next meeting, if possible, or through email or something. That's the most puzzling part to me about this whole thing. You guys did not put this in place, but you can change it, you can fix it. You know, I've kind of given up on that approach, but again, back to Plan B, let's just try to do something, do anything that we can. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed Fowler. And the last speaker is Kevin Cox. The next matter on our agenda then is commissioner and manager update. At this, at this time, we'll hear from Ryan Grusbeck, our town manager, to see if we have, what updates we might have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. Last week, we had the pleasure of a couple of public meetings, I think that were quite informative. I think many or most of you on the board were there, certainly a number of citizens and other concerned stakeholders. First of which was continuation of pedestrian and bicycle plan. There's a sidewalk survey or a walkabout that was done that involved decent people walking through different areas of town, and it definitely provided, speaking personally, definitely provided me some good feedback on some critical areas that can be addressed right away, in terms of, I think this bottom picture is a pretty good example of a sidewalk that needs to be maintained. You will recall that, that we did do some, some annual sidewalk repair earlier in this calendar year, in the form of grinding down some sidewalk edges and kind of leveling things off and making, making the sidewalk stones safer that way, kind of mitigate the heating a little bit. What we have not done yet, but really what I'm doing is repairs such as those stones that you see at the bottom, on the bottom picture there. And so we'll be, we'll be going on, keeping you updated on that, because with our old sidewalk system, of course, there's plenty of work to keep us busy out there. The other piece that, the top picture, that's important to note is, I think that, and this came out, and board members that were there, feel free to chime in, but I think that this feedback came out during the walkabout in terms of crosswalks or lack thereof. I think the picture specifically, you see up on the top, was a crosswalk that didn't really have any beginning or end point, really any safe beginning or end point. And so first of all, that's, that's a general sort of thing that needs to be addressed. We found it in a couple of spots in town. And then two, some needed sidewalk placement, excuse me, some needed crosswalk placements in different parts in town. A couple of the more obvious ones, Cross 15-501, which is where this is, this is actually south of the sort of top one that's on Santa Road. On 15-501, there's two of them in particular, there's one at Powell Place where it crosses McDonald's, and then there's another crosswalk that's in front of Bojangles and crosses over to Northland Drive in front of the high school. Those both cross DOT roads, obviously. And so it's, I had the pleasure of speaking with some DOT folks, actually, the next night at the 15-501 widening open house, and so I think there's, there's some work to be done on that front. I believe on the widening project, there is, there is a crosswalk actually contemplated and designed at the area that I just described at Powell Place, so that is going, I don't recall, and I know we have the plans, I don't recall, I suspect not, that there'll be a sidewalk designed in front of Bojangles and Northwood. But those are, again, those are two big ones that, that we'll follow back, follow, follow up on. The one, a couple of sidewalks that Mayor Perry and I saw direct was over on 64 West Main, crossing at L's Diner from just the north side of West Main. And so there are things like that where there actually is, there actually are accessible ramps available, but for whatever reason, no crosswalks. So it's just, like I said, the whole exercise was really kind of eye-opening and informative, and I think it really is going to, it was really stimulating, as far as I'm concerned, to get us to work on some of these things. So I don't know if you guys have, you guys can chime in now or later if you want.
It was fascinating that one of the sad facts was that we chose perhaps one of the hottest days of the year to do this walkabout, but, but there are a number of locations where you see the, what is called a truncated.
Sphere.
Sphere insert that, that has bumps on it, and I, that apparently is used for persons who are not fully sighted to be able to sense that they are about to move from sidewalk into a traffic area. I always thought it was to keep wheelchairs from running into the street, but, but we all got an education that day, and, and especially around the elementary school. There are, there are some sidewalks that are very excellent, and then there's the sidewalk that goes to nowhere, it goes into a, into a ditch, as a matter of fact. And so there, there is a lot to be done, but it was, it, it, there was an excellent reporting system back to the people who were there, and Ryan Grusbeck and I were together with a woman from Safe Routes to School, which is a statewide organization that helps to, helps municipalities plan for safe walking for children who wish to walk to school or need to walk to school. Anybody else want to talk about their experience?
Yeah, the 15-501 widening, I think, again, there was good attendance there. We got some feedback about the project, when it's going to start, some of the design, design elements of it. There is also a site, a website that we put out on social media last week that is being administered by NC DOT, and they are asking for, NC DOT is asking for public input on the project. You can also find additional designs and plans for that. If anybody needs any help with that, feel free to let me know. And that's essentially, essentially all I have for, for tonight, with the exception of upcoming meetings. Of course, we do not have that first July, that typical first July, second Tuesday meeting this, this year, as is custom. this year as is custom. But we plan on, we discussed this a little bit at the last meeting, we plan on gathering a significant amount of feedback to a lot of the planned work that we've been doing with staff and with third-party consultants, mainly our infrastructure, over the course of this summer. We have too, some requests from Architect Hobs, architects regarding our town hall project who needs to feedback from you on that. So we have some dates that we'll be seeking from you this July and possibly early August to go over some of these things in detail. And so I think Alice will be helping coordinate that, so definitely more to come on that as well. With that, I will tap out. If you have any comments, questions, concerns, please feel free to ask.
Okay. I did attend first the meeting that Ryan Brusbeck discussed, the bike path plan and the widening of 15-501. And, but other than that, are there other meetings that were attended by members of the board that you'd like to speak about?
Okay. Well, I attended the Chatham County Housing Advisory Board meeting on last Thursday and very good meeting. It's held in Southern City Library, and we are still in the process of formulating a reportable housing policy and we're getting really, really excited. I meant to bring you all a copy, tentative copy, but I will provide that to you all next time, but it is very interesting. We have changed, removed the location part of that policy to be two separate ones now. And we had also provided some emergency assistance for housing for someone so that they are housing away and we provided some great housing for them in terms of funding and that was provided in the third part. But we are definitely working on that. And again, it is a public meeting. Generally, we have that the first Thursday of each month and it is on the website. And so if anyone would like to attend and present any type of ideas in terms of portable housing or ideas, questions, comments, they are certainly welcome.
Do you have the report? Yeah, Wilson Foley, I did think about you when I drove on the 64-5 pass. There is an appalling lack of trees that have been taken down right near the new apartments that are being constructed. And so I think that for all the important work that we do about the environment, I think that this is another situation where we need to make sure that our own, that our ordinances are being followed and extended into the part of the legacy part of town as well as at Chatham Park. So I was really shocked. If you haven't been that way, prepare yourself. Okay. Old business, the first matter of old business is the Chatham Park Plan District Development, additional element of open space.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board. At the last meeting, we held a public, you all held a public hearing on the amendments to the open space element that Chatham Park has applied for. Per the agreement between the state, the town, and Chatham Park, the amendments proposed are to increase buffers, to solidify the Chatham Park language as it results to their buffer, that Zone 3 area. In the staff report or in the memo, Elizabeth and myself tried to identify and comment to at least, I think it was six comments that was raised at the public hearing to, or five, five comments that was brought up at the public hearing to give you a little bit more context from a staff perspective. We can answer any questions that you might have as to those comments or other comments and the applicant can certainly entertain any questions as well.
Yes, it's a hard one. I appreciate the construct from whoever had to do all that typing and redlining, but reading it over was a real challenge. And so shall we open it up for questions then for either Jeff Jones or for who will be speaking on Chatham Park? Ken Eagle, thank you.
Ken Eagle, 105 Weston Estates, Wade Carey for Chatham Park, and also Robbie Odom, Lewis Ravanel will be possibly speaking as well, depending on what questions you might have.
I think one of my concerns, because in the table of uses in the additional buffer, there were quite a few changes to that table pending being. Should we take a look at those notes first?
What are you would like?
I'm on redline. Yeah, it starts on, okay, very good, thank you. I noticed that with respect to access trails in the additional buffer areas, that the language seemed to be stronger that has been taken out through redlining simply because it talked about the width of the access trails and it gave more direction, I thought, with respect to providing no disturbance and installation of uses in that area. It seems like the one that we came down to, which does not exceed the minimum width practicable, it seemed to be a rather undefined kind of phrase. Was there a particular reason that we adjusted the language there on the access trail?
Well, this is a general comment about the table. The table in the current approved element is based on the town's riparian buffer protection ordinance table that regulates the first 50 feet or the 50 feet of a riparian buffer on each side of the stream. And as I'm sure you know, this, the town's riparian buffer ordinance was based on the state's model ordinance that was put out through the Environmental Management Commission and their regulations. And I've got to assume that was after a great deal of study and thought that went into it by state officials at the time. That riparian buffer ordinance, as I said, regulates the 50-foot buffer, but it also recognizes that there are two segments to that 50-foot buffer. There's the first 30 feet, which the ordinance refers to as Zone 1, which is obviously the most critical part of that 50-foot buffer. Then there's the next 20 feet, which the ordinance refers to as Zone 2. We are now referring to any buffer beyond that that's in Chatham Park as Zone 3 for clarification purposes, so we don't get confused. It was a little confusing the way it's currently written. But the general comment is this, those, the buffers beyond 50 feet, going back to the master plan, are buffers that Chatham Park voluntarily imposed or agreed to impose on this property. They were not buffers that were regulated by either the state or the town of Pittsburgh. So we feel like that some of these things that have been changed recognize the fact that sometimes in the town's ordinance, you're dealing with 30 feet or 20 feet. In the Chatham Park additional buffer, you're dealing with 50 feet. So sometimes the distances or the square footages of impact, they don't quite match up to when you're dealing with the 20 feet or 30 feet. So that's one of the differences. But the main difference is the fact that these are not, these buffers are a little different from the ones that are, again, regulated by the state, regulated by the town's ordinance. So the access trails, we, you know, these would be proposed based on what is the minimum width as practicable and that the town, if we're coming in with a plan, just like any development plan that Chatham Park presents, the town's got to approve it. And if, for example, we come in with a greenway plan and we proposed a 50-foot wide greenway, I suspect somebody would say, well, that's probably a little bit wider than it needs to be, particularly as we talked about 30-foot wide greenways and other elements. Might have been in this element, I don't remember specifically, but one of the elements we talked about a 30-foot wide greenway. So that would kind of establish a standard for that. Other things like if there's some kind of multi-use trail that's not exactly, not actually a greenway trail, then you have to see what the purpose of it is and what width would be appropriate for that purpose. You might know until you, you know, figured out what kind of trail it might be and where it was going and what it was to be used for. So these would all be things that would be part of what's proposed in a development plan that would be vetted and approved by this town board.
Well, I think it's worth noting that I think we were talking about the very first item in the table.
Yes.
Access trails, we call it pedestrian access trails leading to surface water docks, fishing piers, boat ramps, and other water dependent activities. So very highly specific type of trail.
Yeah, actually, that's true and
Because a couple of pages back, we talked about greenway and hiking trails. They are completely different creature.
That is different. But I would also point out that probably where this is more likely to occur than anywhere would be on land that the town would own, that would be, or could own, that would be park land that might lead to a road ramp or something like that. So, well, that would be in Chatham Park, that would be subject to the elements.
I think to prove that, this type of access trail would by definition enter into Zone 2 and Zone 1 and therefore be restricted to this four-foot width.
Yes.
So probably unlikely that you would have a 20-foot wide that would then get restricted to two to four feet wide. But anyway, I see a very specific designation.
Yeah, but the four-foot designation apparently was what was proposed by you all and passed by us back last year. But now, I'm sorry, when you said that it's very specific using that that four feet is appropriate, I don't see anywhere where it says four feet.
That's in our buffer, our buffer table that has, that defines the functions of the 50-foot buffer, Zone 1, Zone 2, this being Zone 3.
The town's buffer table, the four-foot requires
RVP. Mr. Odom has something to add.
I would just add to that, this, the town's model ordinance, well, the town's ordinance based on the state's model ordinance is trapped in, I don't know, it's been 10 years ago. But looking at this, a four-foot width, that doesn't even give you necessarily ADA accessibility. You really need five, but you can do four feet, then you have to go like 100 feet and do a five-by-five turn around and things like that. So that's one of the reasons, but Mr. Piocco hit the point that I was going to make, is that this, if you read, this is trails leading to surface water docks, fishing piers, boat ramps. So you would be having to cross Zone 2 and Zone 1, which you would have to go through the town's riparian buffer ordinance, which, that would have to be approved by the town. So that's one of the reasons we left it that way is that this, you know, with this here, if for some reason the town will change the ordinance to say five-foot width in the trail, then that would allow that in the future because, I mean, I think you would be looking at a five-foot, five-foot trail just because of ADA accessibility. So that's give the town that flexibility. And Mr. Eagle was right too, this is probably more, you know, appropriate to like a town park that would want some type of accessibility to a fishing pier or something like that.
Thank you.
On the memo that was prepared by Jeff Jones, where he addressed the questions from the public hearing. Number one, it talks about increasing the buffer to be 700 feet in areas with a smaller buffer, 300 feet along the Hall River to ensure the 35% retention of existing trees within 2,000 feet of the Hall River. And I just would like to say that I would be in favor of that. It would be a way to ensure the 35% that we had requested. And I would like to let this in, just to give the rest of the board, it would be in favor of that too, as a way of making sure that 35% would be retained for the tree protection element.
I think what I'm reading is that that would be guaranteed through the tree protection ordinance, Jeff Jones.
So staff really did have a necessary direction on that. We were just pointing out the comment that read that out. And that if you were to increase the buffer, yes, I believe that is one way to increase the tree retention in that area, the 35% to be the tree protection element. But notwithstanding any change to the open space and that width, we're still going to get the 35%. You're going to see that in small area plan or development plans that will come for you. So I think it is one way to get it. Is it the right time to ask for more or for assurance in that? I don't know. That's for you all to decide.
I'm saying that I'm in favor of that.
Well, we have to comply with the tree rotation element that's been adopted and it requires the 35%. So, I mean, it's already a regulation.
I don't think there's any doubt about that or question about that. I want to understand that your suggestion is that it would be increased to 700 feet, whereas now it's 300 plus the extra 50.
Yeah, well, that's what we've agreed to do and that's still what we're agreeing to.
Thoughts and comments from the board?
Mr. Eagle, I appreciate you saying that that's what you've agreed to do and you're still agreeing to do. And I think that I would like to see, and I believe that my constituents would like to see that codified. And I don't think that that extra 50-foot, while it's been promised on occasion, I don't think it's codified here.
I believe it's included in the re-protection element now. Isn't it? Didn't we put the 50-foot vegetator setback in there too? Didn't we put the 50-foot vegetation setback in there, Chuck?
I think it's a real part of the property, private property, is my understanding.
Yes, it is, but it's still a restriction on that property.
I believe it says it will be recorded on the map.
Yes.
That's true. Yeah, that's true.
On the map, yes, on the subdivision map. All right. Yes, sir.
May I stand corrected?
Well, my overwhelming sense from trying to get through this is that here, again, we've got a lot of complexity. And my sense is that we would be better off with the original table from the RP, RVPPO. And my reading of the settlement agreement is, with the EQ, is that there's nothing in it that prevents us from doing even better for the environment. And nothing in that agreement suggests that this board should allow policy changes that open new problems or create even more flexibility for developers in future whom we haven't met. I want to understand better the, I have a lot of swirling questions about replanting from temporary intrusions and mitigation of damages from allowed uses, mitigation of damages from exempt uses. So maybe I should ask staff to help me understand that. With the revisions to this table of uses in additional buffers, is there mitigation for damages from allowed uses?
I think that marks the mitigation.
Okay. And how about for exempt uses?
I don't know. Let me guess.
There's no mitigation normally. And how do we, how do we govern replanting from temporary intrusions?
I'll give one of them a nod. I'll come up here and let you all hear. So there's a couple of things that are temporary uses that do seem to be planting. The voltage in the proposed open space element does not give the same specific criteria because our riparian buffer ordinance points to the mitigation section to articulate that. I don't know if Chatham Park may have a way that they would propose on how we articulate that in the open space element, but that would be something that could have additional clarification.
Well, the only thing I'm aware of is, with respect to what you're asking about, is in the mitigation section of the riparian buffer protection ordinance. Excuse me. And that mitigation section allows mitigation to be accomplished, to be accomplished in several ways. One is to do some replanting in the area that is actually impacted. Another is to do some replanting in a different area that has some of the same characteristics or is located similarly to the impacted area. It doesn't have to be the impacted area. A third way is by paying money into a fund that the state manages. For example, you could pay money into this fund and it could be used somewhere other than Chatham Park or other than Pittsburgh, is my understanding. And another, fourth way, is to buy dedication of some land somewhere that could be used to satisfy those. So there's more than one way that the ordinance allows that to be done if it's a mitigation type situation. And that's the only thing I'm aware of in the riparian buffer protection ordinance that addresses your question.
Okay. So how do I read from these changes where any reader, any developer or their consultants would get that direction as regards replanting after temporary intrusions?
Again, it relates to the mitigation section of your ordinance.
Can you show me where?
Sure, it's Section Nine in the riparian buffer protection ordinance.
I'm talking about in this text.
No, it's not in this text.
Okay, then we need to reference it.
Well, we have, as I mentioned to start the discussion, we feel like these buffers are, should not require mitigation if they're impacted because they're not, in the inner 50 feet next to the stream, they're not state mandated and town regulated buffers. They were voluntary buffers, going back to the master plan. And whereas, you know, some of the uses, you've got three categories of uses in your ordinance. You have exempt, you have allowable, and you have allowable with mitigation. And we just, as a philosophical matter, don't think these buffers should require mitigation if they're impacted. Now, when it's in the allowable column, just as in the allowable with mitigation, there's a standard for that. If you're going to impact for use that's allowable as opposed to exempt, whoever is proposing that impact must demonstrate that there is no practicable alternative to that impact. And that is something that would be reviewed by you, I suppose.
Let me mention something real quick. All of the town's riparian buffers are still subject to our riparian buffer.
Oh, absolutely.
The first 50 feet must meet all of our riparian buffer ordinance. There is no exception. If it's allowable use, it's allowable, and it has to prove that there's no practical alternative. If it's allowable with mitigation, it's got to meet the mitigation criteria. The area that we are talking about with the updated table is for Zone Three. This was, of course, this was actually a request to synophy this because the table that was in place was complicated and confusing when trying to address the fact that we had multiple different zones and different types of things that needed to be in those different zones. So this is to clarify that the 50 feet meets everything in the riparian buffer ordinance, and the only thing we're talking about here is the outer portion. That can be anywhere from the 50 additional feet or the larger ones along the Hall River. So if something's got to go through the process for mitigation, they would be referring to the riparian buffer ordinance for those measures.
So it wanted to.
It's only wanted to, correct?
Not Zone Three.
Correct.
And I just...
So Zone Three is within the 50 feet?
No, Zone Three is outside.
Absolutely.
So Zone One is the first 30 feet, Zone Two is the next 20, and Zone Three is anything beyond the 50 feet that the town has the riparian buffer ordinance rules for. So anything above 50 feet.
So my understanding of riparian buffers, and I would say by extension voluntary buffers, that is Zone Three that we're talking about, I think that their purpose is to provide that protection of the water ship still and to have a dense tree canopy. That's what's needed to slow the rainfall and to delay the stormwater flows. And I don't understand why would we be wanting to have buffers that could be compromised and then not have process for their mitigation in case of temporary intrusions that damage that buffering capacity? So I think that we should have Zone Three subject to Zone Three rules. It's a buffer. Let's have a buffer. Be assured that we'll have a buffer.
It is going to be above. It is above.
I think if it's had temporary intrusions, then that's impaired. That ability of buffer is impaired.
I think the only two temporary uses in our table uses are temporary sediment bases and temporary roads. And both of those, I think, speak to some level of replanting. Today's practices, temporary sediment bases are not as typical because most of us are using them as future permanent stormwater devices, and they would have to be in a different section. There's different criteria, and it would not be temporary, it would not need to be replanted, it would not be, so that helps to give more clarity on those two items. I believe that's the only two temporary situations that can base that question on others. Let me know what the other criteria is on.
Here's what you're saying, Joe, and, you know, I see a little bit where you're finding the two temporary. It does say that it has to be replanted with comparable vegetation. I would assume that comparable vegetation is definitely was there prior to the disturbance.
Not the same density. And that would be reviewed, this is like then prior to construction, that temporary attack.
There would be mitigation.
There is mitigation. It's not still out quite as precisely as that mitigation section in the riparian buffer ordinance, but to me, that is criteria for us to measure, yes.
Do we need to make it more clear? Do you think that would be clear to developers?
Yes, states prior conditions, so that would be...
But there's no deadline, which is under the temporary...
Says immediately. Says replant it immediately. The only exception is if you're, if you're, right now, when it's 90 degrees every day, you can wait till the dormant season and plant when it's actually better, might survive. So otherwise, it does say immediately.
Well, I was knowing that the red line version shows that the, at the end of five years, the restored buffer should comply with the restoration criteria in the RVPPO. So I wasn't sensing whether this was less strict or more strict by the use of the word immediately and whether or not that would be, that restoration would be completely complied with by the year.
I'm not sure I understand your question, Angela. I mean, you replant it to the condition...
The language struck through is riparian buffer language. The language remaining is specific to Zone Three. I don't know if that helps to clarify the distinction.
What page is this?
I believe your own page. Are they in the wrong?
And, you know, sorry about the table. It's very difficult to do a red line comparison document of the table. It just, it doesn't lend itself to that.
The page numbers don't...
That's why we did a summary, and that's why we asked you to look at the clean version. It would be easier to read.
Is not, so the red line strike through one and not the page numbers, is what I was looking at?
Temporary, temporary, those matters are alphabetical. It's after scientific studies and stream banking stabilization. So the next section is temporary road.
Temporary roads is, we're dealing with is Page 11, I think, of that red line. And the next page has the temporary sediment erosion control.
Right. I'm glad you took out my name, I did.
Clarify that, Mike.
Yes, you did. Um, thoughts and questions?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, just getting my thoughts together. Just having a little...
So, Ms. Goodson, how would we, how would you know what the previous pre-construction, topographic, hydrologic, and vegetation status was?
It would be shown on existing conditions on construction.
Okay. Including vegetation?
I mean, where a tree line is would definitely be covered. A tree survey may not be an automatic, but there would be a way to note that on the plan if we needed to. There's specific concern you found, I mean...
Well, a buffer, I haven't seen tree surveys in buffers so far. Are we calling for tree surveys in buffers, James?
Not typically, but if we're talking about something that needs to be replanted and we needed to know that, we could do a sample, we could do, we could do any number of things to help if it was not clear. If it's not clear on the existing conditions what would need to be replanted, then we could ask for more information during the review process.
Well, I'm wondering if we might, in order to make it clear, if we might reference that specific section of the RVPPO. As I understand it, Page 27, Item Seven, subsection, or Section E, subsection, Little I, Little I, of our RVPPO. There's a specific call-out for replanting of density, 320 trees per acre at maturity.
Well, Mr. Bynum, I would say that we would not propose to do that because the existing conditions might not be 320 trees per whatever to start with. I mean, and if, under your own ordinance, if you don't require that, under your own ordinance, you would go by the conditions that were existing at the time of the impact. In the inner 50, in the inner 50 feet...
If it's not clear on the existing conditions, what would need to be replanted, then we could ask for more information during the review process.
Well, I'm wondering if we might, in order to make it clear, if we might reference that specific section of the RBPO. As I understand it, page 27, item seven, subsection, or section E, subsection... Little I, little I of our RBPO. There's a specific call-out for replanting of density, 320 trees per acre at maturity.
Well, Mr. Bonnet, I would say that we would not propose to do that because the existing conditions might not be 320 trees per whatever to start with. I mean, and if, under your own ordinance, if you don't require that, under your own ordinance, you would go by the conditions that were existing at the time of the impact. In the inner fifty, in the inner 50 feet.
Well, let's...
That would be, but it's, but the language is the same. It says replant, you have the language in the table. Is the same, is it not?
Temporary roads.
Temporary roads. Here it is. It's the same, is the same language. Temporary settlement and road, this is our RBPO, Temporary Settlement and Erosion Control Devices Immediately After Construction Is Complete and Replanted Immediately With Comparable Vegetation. The same language we have in, here's the...
Well, it seems to me that in order to document comparable revegetation, you would show that on a plan, i.e. a landscape plan that says, here's the extent of a temporary disturbance, here's how it will be replanted. And in order to demonstrate as comparable, you would have provided some kind of documentation as to what was there.
Well, here's, here's what might work, and this, maybe this will satisfy Mr. Bonnet's as well. We'll see. There is a sentence that we don't have that is in the RBPO at the end of these two sections that refers to the section you just mentioned. And we would be willing to add those, that sentence to the end of those two sections, which says, "At the end of five years, restored buffer shall comply with the restoration requirement criteria in section 9C7 of this ordinance."
9C7 is the section.
That's the section you were referring to. I didn't understand that's what you were talking about.
Instead of saying this ordinance, we say the RBPO.
It would be the RBPO, yes. Exactly. And I think that's, I think that is what the mayor and Commissioner Bonnet both are talking about. Is that correct, Mr. Bonnet?
I was looking at section seven.
9C7.
Oh, okay, 9C7.
9C7.
Going up, all right, got it.
Further questions?
I do have two, two other amendments I would like to propose to add to this.
What?
If it's, questions are, if we're through with questions.
Are we?
I'm not through, but I'd like to hear your...
I'll defer to you, Mr. Bonnet.
I'm still gathering my thoughts here.
I'm not sure you've been talking about a couple of items.
Sure, please.
Okay. I am looking at the Allen markup, the final product. The way to navigate, page 15. And at the very top says drainage ditches, roadside ditches and school water entrances. Item bullet, bullet item number two, realignment of existing roadway drainage ditches. I wanted to kick that into the allowable as opposed to exempt. But in fact, upon further reading, I see item bullet number four, which is allowable, affects the change that I want. So, I'm okay with leaving the second bullet as exempt and the fourth bullet as allowable. But I would like to add back the language that's been deleted from bullet two that was previously in the element. And it would read such that, it would read, "Realignment of existing roadside drainage ditches retaining the design dimensions, provided," the additional language would be this, "provided that no additional travel lanes are added," would be reinserted into bullet two.
And then the rest of the sentence would remain the same?
Yeah, "The minimum required roadway typical section is used based on traffic and safety considerations." The other items that I have is on page 19. And it is the second item from the bottom. Says utility, non-electric, other than perpendicular crossings. I would like to separate that item into, or have two subheadings for that item, two bullets, if you will. One would be water sewer and reclaimed water infrastructure. And I'd like that to be in the exempt category. And the second bullet would be all other non-electric infrastructure. And that would be in the allowable categories.
Does that look different, Ken Eagle?
Yes, actually, those are the items I wanted to discuss anyway, so...
Oh.
Yeah. That wording is fine with us.
Where are we? Can you see the break or? To gather thoughts, any final questions, or where are we?
I would appreciate, Mr. Eagle, if you could reiterate the point about 9C7.
Sure. If you go to your table, we were referring to two items in the table. One was temporary roads. It's gonna be hard for me to tell you that.
On the redline, it's not.
Do you have, do you have the clean version handy?
Yes.
Page 18? Oh, 18 and 19, I think. Be at the bottom of page 18 is the first one. And then at the top of page 19, Temporary Settlement and Erosion Control Devices. And what I, what I proposed is to add the same sentence at the end of those two sections that is in the town's riparian buffer protection ordinance. And that reads as follows. A second, I'll tell you. "At the end of five years, the restored buffer shall comply with the restoration criteria in section 9C7 of this ordinance," but it'll say of the RBPO instead of this ordinance. Or at least refer to the, to the RBPO.
Could you repeat that, at the end of five years?
Sure. "At the end of five years," sorry, I lost my place. That's right here. "At the end of five years, the restored buffer shall comply with the restoration criteria in section 9C7 of the RBPO."
And for clarification, Ken Eagle, that's in both the temporary roads and in temporary settlement and erosion control.
Correct, yes. And that sentence to the end of those two.
Yeah, thank you.
Same way it appears in your ordinance.
I appreciate that, Mr. Eagle.
Certainly.
I want to digest and wring the rest of my head around because I'm still, I still find so many sections that is confusing and changing.
Well, sometimes your ordinance is confusing as well.
Yes, it is.
As are many ordinances.
I'm hoping to see questions. Break for...
Mr. Goodson, did you get through your list?
I did, I did. Took some time to speak out. Looked through it and I appreciate your additional language, restoration of those temporary disturbances. It's a bad, it's been looking to approve incorporating those two sentences that just were eliminated by this board.
We, you know, I brought up the issue of the 700-foot buffer line by the beach.
Well, my response was it's, you're, the 35% is already taken care of and the buffers, we've already set out what we've agreed to do. We are not offering to add another 700 feet of buffer to the 300 feet.
Does the rest of the floor have any one about that?
I thought we'd kind of fully vetted this in the tree rotation element that was approved at the last meeting.
So, there's a motion on the floor to approve with the edits that have been made this evening? Is there a second to Michael Fioco's motion? Is there further discussion, Colonel Baldwin, is that second to Michael Fioco's motion?
Would you like me to review those two, those amendments one more time, just to be sure everybody's heard? Be happy to do that. Okay. In the table, under temporary roads and temporary settlement and erosion control, we would add a sentence that says that within five years, "At the end of five years, the restored buffer shall comply with the restoration criteria in section 9C7 of the RBPO." Then the two items that Commissioner Fioco addressed, these are also in the table. And the first one has to do with drainage ditches. And it's the second bullet item under, of the four, under drainage ditches. And it reads, "Realignment of existing roadside drainage ditches retaining the design dimensions." Then what would be added would be comma, and the language it would be added, "Provided that no additional travel lanes are added," that's the additional language. And then it continues, "And the minimum required roadway typical section is used based on traffic and safety considerations." Then the second one is under utilities in the table, and it's actually the last entry in the utility section, which currently states, "Utility, non-electric, other than perpendicular crossings." And that would be divided into two subcategories. And the first one would be water sewer and reclaimed water infrastructure. And that one would be in the exempt column. And the second one would be all other non-electric infrastructure. And that would be in the allowable column. And I think that captures all of it.
So, those would be things to be incorporated in Michael's motion, second by Colonel Baldwin. Further discussion? Not those in favor, please indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our motion carries.
Thank you.
The next matter on our agenda under old business is the rezoning of 198 Phil Fourth Street. On the Victoria Bank and Lido, any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. This is rezoning 201A-03. Dan Deacon is proposing to rezone a portion of personal 7817 from R12 Medium Density Residential to ONICZ Office and Institutional Conditional Zoning District. Located at 198... Located at 196 Hillsborough Street, the portion of this parcel to be rezoned totals approximately half an acre in size and has been zoned R-12 since the late 1980s. The future land use plan has this property designated for traditional neighborhood. The traditional neighborhood category describes existing neighborhoods that are primarily residential but also include a mix of other uses. The density is less than that of the town center category but higher than that in medium density category. Enval development, including single-family, multifamily businesses, and mixed-use buildings that complement the existing neighborhood, is appropriate in this area. The surrounding properties are zoned R-12 to the north and west, ONI to the south, and C2 to the east. The applicant is proposing to keep the existing structure and make an addition to the rear. The existing structure is over 100 years old, so should the restoration become too difficult, the applicant is proposing to rebuild matching the elevations that have been provided. Access to parking in the rear will be provided through an access easement on an adjoining property leading out to Thompson Street. Through this rezoning, the applicant is proposing to limit the permitted uses on his property to the following ten, or following eight uses, which have been amended since the last meeting. You have a paper that was on your desk from earlier. I think most of you saw it, it's an amendment from what was in your packet.
Is it swapped out?
There was a slight change. I'll read the listed uses for you. One been breakfast, single-family residence, agencies, including travel broker, insurance, loan, employment, bank savings and loan, similar financial institutions, all without teller services, beauty salons, barber shops, spas, limited to 1,500 square feet maximum total for these uses, medical, dental, paramedical, chiropractic offices, offices for general business, nonprofit, professional. And here's where the change was for personal services such as tax services, yoga, tutoring, personal fitness, and antique and gift details. A public hearing was held on May 28. Four speakers were present for this hearing, two presented arguments against the rezoning and two spoke in support of it. The planning board considered this rezoning at their meeting on June 3. The board showed concern mostly regarding the generalized nature of the proposed uses. Other concerns always regarded signage, business hours, access off Hillsborough Street. In a vote of six to zero, the board found that the request was consistent with the future land use plan. Subsequently, in a vote of five to one, the board recommended approval of the proposed rezoning with the removal of uses four, seven, and nine as listed on the proposed plan, along with the addition of a condition to limit operating hours to normal business hours. The one dissenting vote wished to recommend adding further conditions such as impervious service restrictions, removing the loading space off Hillsborough Street, and amending the restoration of the structure to historic preservation standards. The town board commissioners reviewed this request on June 10. Concern was shown over the property changing to non-residential, and board members requested some of the listed uses be reexamined, such as service establishments, professional or personal services not otherwise listed, and beauty salons, barber shops, and spas. It was also requested that a condition be added which would prohibit internally illuminated signage. The applicant requested time to review the request, and the items tabled. Staff finds this property to be an unsuitable location for office and institutional conditional zoning district as it is positioned between properties currently zoned for medium-density residential, highway commercial, and office and institutional. Due to the property's compatibility with surrounding uses and the proposal's consistency with the future land use plan, staff is recommending approval.
Questions for Victoria or Victoria?
I want to express gratitude to you for your commitment to maintaining the same elevation and get the general sense that you appreciate the beauty of that structure. And I admire that, and I appreciate that. So I want to thank you for that. In recognizing that this is a commercial facility, or your intent is to have this be commercial, the fact that you've included residential as a possibility leads me to wonder about a greater density. Because I generally am thinking that our downtown, I mean, we would like it to be more than more dense. And so I first wanted to pose, I wanted to pose question to you and then to the board, if you might consider changing that to two-family residential. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have an immediate sense of that.
You mean change to strictly family or two families?
I'm thinking duplex.
A duplex?
If in the event, in the future, you choose to use that for residential purposes, if you would be open to having, it could be a double duplex.
You mean you would prefer a duplex over a single residence?
Generally, the option, the option to.
I find it a lot easier.
So it would be one family if they wanted to do that to one or two?
And so then my question to the board is, is this is something that the board is also similarly interested in seeing is a little bit greater density in this section of downtown.
Yeah, I like that, that it remains an option for it to be residential and not finally to be one family or two families.
I thought that, yeah, one family or two family, and I do appreciate you considering doing that, but definitely one family or two family. It would be great to have it or two families because of that one house, if you decide to change it.
And maybe the design would be conducive, but if you had that option, I'd like you to, or force that, I'd like you to have that option.
So you want to add that to one of the?
Just change the one to two.
Or add residents, one family or two family.
Sure.
So it doesn't say, somebody doesn't interpret it as only two family.
More to be straightforward, fairly simple. Staff can give that, I'm sure.
Victoria's looking at the chart. Like that, limited use within, okay?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Well, I would like, I appreciate the work that's been done on whittling the list down. And I appreciate you adding the representative professional services. I would like also to add one condition, and it is to do back with signage. And I know Victoria has advised me that these types of signs are not permitted presently, and I want them not to be permitted ever. I'm very sensitive to the traditional neighborhood. I agree that this is a good fit for it, but I do know there are folks who are living in the area that are very concerned about it. And I think one of the things that would be quite not in character of the neighborhood would be signage that is illuminated, that is flashing, that is animated. I would like to have an affirmative statement that no illuminated signs, internal or external, flashing signs, animated signs, or typical copy signs will be on the property.
I'm not sure if we could do the flashing or animated, because those aren't allowed in, okay?
Right.
Exactly. You know, we can always say two in the door section, different side doors.
In the future, the board or the applicant, come before the board and ask for a change to these conditions as well.
Is there reassurance either through the plan or the design of the house itself guarantees that everybody will exit and come in and out the back? Is that the intention, or is there going to be some front entrances?
There's going to be some, yeah, there's definitely going to be a front entrance on that front porch. So, but we'll have a path where the driveway currently exists. We'll have a path that takes from the back parking lot, takes you around to the front or to a side access to the front porch there. So I think that quite likely you'll see people accessing that front access, and probably the rear will be more employee-driven than access, might be.
It's going to be a lot of traffic on that street. Because there are times when French Connection has parking all up and down in front of what we call the Atlas Moon House, as well as in front of their property as well. And if, given the idea that there's as much intensity in some of these developments, some of these uses, I was just hoping that we could encourage people to park in the back besides employees, because there's a lot of that. That's going to be a lot of traffic along the streets.
Yeah, I mean, our parking really, our off-street parking is totally dedicated to the back lot. So I think people will find it convenient to pull back there and just walk around. But we do want that front to feel like it's a main entrance, and we'll make sure that pedestrian path is very comfortable and obvious to someone that's parking back there.
I just want to comment, I did speak on this a couple weeks ago, but I do just want to reiterate that we spoke on this months ago regarding how important it was to keep Hillsborough Street residential. So with that said, I just cannot support this, even though it's an improvement to the place, but what's going to keep us from easing on up the neighborhood? That's what I'm looking at. What's going to be, who's going to be next? What's the next conditional zoning property up to there? I mean, we have to stop sometime. That's all I'd say on that, but I just can't support it.
I share your concern, and I'd like for us to take steps in the future that will encourage people to protect these homes. But in this case, I feel that this historic home would be lost if we didn't agree to this, and I'm very pleased with their respect of the community, that this historic community is. To me, this is a matter of saving historic building, and I'm not sure would be saved if it weren't for this project.
Further questions, or is there a motion?
I would ask if the applicant accepts the condition that I have put forth on the side.
On the side?
Yeah.
Yes.
With that, I would make the motion that I find this plan consistent with the comprehensive plan.
There's second motion? That this is a consistency, approval. Michael Fiocco moved and Beth Folesen fully seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye. Motion approved?
Second. Motion to approve was made. Addition of one or two residences than the additional coverage about the signage. Those in favor, I'm sorry, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So out of respect for Commissioner Farrell's concern, I really admire the point of principle, and I want to echo Commissioner Foley's sympathies, Mr. Farrell. And I agree that we don't want to see this creek further. And so I wonder if we can ask staff for recommendations of what policy actions this board can take to ensure that the creek doesn't continue.
Yeah, we've internally talked about it over the last two weeks. We'll be thinking more about that in coming to the law in the future with potential land use.
Land use plan amendments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Different type of category and language to identify this area and thing, something different to traditional neighborhoods, historic neighborhoods, something like that. Really, really business uses.
Got it.
For you, none of them should vary specifically to business uses.
I think that's going in the direction of Commissioner Farrell's concerns.
And will there, I'm sorry?
There's been a maturation, Mr. Farrell remembers. There was, I think it's one time mixed, commercial, all on that side of the road.
Yeah.
And then a couple years then came, so it did a different, there's still a lot of some businesses. And I'm hearing that maybe it's a historic neighborhood, that's a definition. And we can bring that forward to your, you know, next year. I know Victoria's been thinking about it.
Thank you.
And my question would be whether there will be a notice of zoning violation.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
She's going in for more. She can operate in for ten years. You all will have a decision to make.
If you'll welcome. Okay, thank you, sir. There's one, there's one. It'll be an interesting conversation. All right. Madam's budget, my group's. Do you need to take a break for one minute?
I would appreciate that. So I move, we break for five minutes.
There's second. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. And Stan goes ahead. We only left three minutes.
Yes, it's artificial. No, Rick Parks bought it about two years ago, maybe. Yeah.
If we're back in session, we're having a whole week back. Can we have a motion to go back?
So, there we go.
Jay Farrell moved and Michael Fiocco seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. We're ready to go on the budget now.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. What you have is a slightly updated version of the budget that was distributed to you back on May 13. We've had, as I mentioned previously, we've had a copy on display in various formats. You'll recall, we conducted a public hearing back on May 28. We had some discussion on June 10, and that brings us tonight, where hopefully we can do what we need to do to get the budget approved in time for the June 30 deadline. I won't go into any detail about this slide, I just got a couple of things I want to go into before we get into specific changes that were made on the document. Fun with charts and graphs, but not too much fun, don't worry. What we have here is just kind of an overview of where the general fund money goes. And this is reasonably consistent with previous years. I didn't put up a comparison of other years because I'm not sure how meaningful it would be, but as you can imagine, lease and fire represent the biggest portion of our budget when you add in public works. That's really the nuts and bolts of local government. And this is reasonably consistent with previous years. I didn't, I did put up a comparison of other years because I don't, I'm not sure how meaningful it would be, but as you can imagine, lease and fire represent, represent the biggest portion of our budget when you add in public works. That's really the nuts and bolts of local government 101. And that's, that's the majority of the budget. You can see in terms of the planning and engineering slices are steadily getting bigger over the years. And I think that is a reflection on the work that we have going on here currently as well as the work that we have, that we would expect to happen. I think those are solid investments in, in Pittsburgh's future in helping build the types of infrastructure, both legal and physical, to, to help meet some of the growth proposals that we have out there. Highlights, these, these were discussed with you at the last, at the last meeting. The one that I would, the one that I would highlight out of these highlights for this discussion would be that we're still at this point in time not, not currently anticipating the tax increase with this budget. We do have, we do have a general fund fund balance draw that's gotten considerably higher since the last version and we'll explain that momentarily. But the big portion of the draw is for capital project. I don't think it's something that's so recurring of a nature that we'll need to increase, increase our tax rate to help, to help meet it. We have more than sufficient money's available in our, in our general fund balance, I think, to accommodate this increase. So, so at this point in time, staff would be recommending that we keep it, keep those in possession. The changes, since June 6th, we did break out some engineering review fees, which we previously under subbed in review fees. That's been reflected, we allocated $2,500 to the affordable housing board. That was money that, recall, was approved in a budget adjustment in the current fiscal year, but to my knowledge, it hasn't been spent and I believe it was, whether it was for, whether it was for planning purposes at that point, but it was essentially housekeeping money that had been carved out out of this year's budget. We're moving that money forward. The big portion or big increase that I had mentioned before was also for an approved item from this current fiscal year, that being a generator in the amount of $66,300. I recall that we did a budget adjustment for that sometime within the last few months. It's expected to be installed in August, so that's in, that, that will be in the upcoming fiscal year. So we've already carved out the money, we haven't spent it, but our choices were essentially, do we do another budget adjustment come August or we just, or do we just go ahead and, do we go ahead and specify the draw in this current fiscal year, or excuse me, in the, in the upcoming fiscal year, we decided to be transparent and allocate the $66,000 to the generator in this proposed budget. Definitely would have helped a few days ago, so we, we need the generator. Fire department increase of $4,974, that was, we had mentioned it, we had mentioned that, that amount at the, the previous meeting. That's reflected in this current budget. There was a balance out in Department 5400 in cleaning, in terms of increasing cleaning by, by $1,000 and decreasing contract services. That's changed from the previous version we had. It's reflected in the version that you have in front of you. With regard to the capital improvement program, there is, I don't remember who brought it up, whether it was Commissioner Figo or, but we have in the, in the capital improvement plan, a, three I and I items that are scheduled for this, this upcoming fiscal year. I'm referring actually to the bottom, I'll start referring actually to this bottom bullet here. We have $189,298 that we're proposing to draw from capital reserve for enterprise. That's the, that's essentially like a fund, that's the, that is the fund balance for enterprise fund. We want to put that in capital outlay to cover three, three rather significant I and I items, one being work on, or some modeling work on the Robeson Creek downfall, which is the large, large pipe that we, I believe, had a little bit of discussion on in the last meeting. Then also too, we would have some, some line repairs along our distribution, or excuse me, our collection system, as well as some additional cleaning inspection from additional, what they call TV, we're sending a, a remote TV through the line and identifying opportunities for additional repairs. And so that, that brings us to a total of $189,298 that we would propose to draw from capital reserves. That would, that, that would not affect our system development fees for this upcoming year. And we can explain that in a little bit. We have that money on hand, no additional administrative adjustments are required for that and we can continue moving forward and repairing or input and creation problems that we have throughout. There was some discussion last week also too about planning fee modifications and Commissioner Figo indicated that he noticed a few others and I think that, that exclusion of, of all of the planning fee modifications were, I think I was offering highlights, what I have here in these next few pages are, are the subtotal of the modifications that you can see. And then as well as some fees that are added and then some, some titles that have been changed and some fees that, that were removed. And I don't know, Jeff, if we have an opportunity, if you have any comments on highlights out of these, do you want to let me know?
No, I think what we, what we've tried to sort of get more in lock with other places as to what fees each are. There is a change that we're proposing to incentivize folks to give us good plans whenever they submit plans for us to review. So our calendar system is based on a, a time when they submit and then we get comments and we go a couple of rounds of that before it gets to the planning board, before it gets to the law. We would ideally like to follow that schedule out all, all the way through. Things happen where either staff or the applicant, either staff makes new comments and we have things that we have to address, or the applicant does, doesn't address all the comments and they submit plans back to us to review and we haven't, they haven't addressed all the comments. So it's like a spinning wheel. So we're proposing a fee after a certain, after, I think it's two reviews, which may be, now looking at our calendar system, it may need to be three reviews because I think our calendar is, is published has three consecutive reviews. So we would be okay if you all changed that across the board in the stormwater review, the construction drawn review and the preliminary and subposition review, the plan, the plan review to three reviews. And it's discretion as to when we would charge that. So it would not automatically be a charge if we get to a fourth review and the applicant has not corrected everything. It could be the staff that's made those mistakes and we would say, yeah, that's not a big deal. We're going to, we're going to continue on. We know that that was precluded for us to, to have and we've asked you to make those changes. If it was a minor item that was just omitted by mistake, we wouldn't do those things. We talked today about a policy of how we would speak to when we would have, when we would charge this fee and when we might not. It's going to be hard to have language that addresses everything, but I think we're, we're going down a path of getting some clues to developers and applicants as to when that fee might be charged. So if, if it were approved as is with the correction decree, staff would work on policy to tell folks when, when that fee might be charged.
I think that's a great idea. I like the idea of three, two is, yeah, a bit too soon I thought of. And the idea of having some policy statement so that expectations are set.
Yeah.
You know, so that's why you're here, you know, and, and you won't say no.
Yeah.
But you'll give a carrot or.
Right, right.
Of what type of change, what you're instituting.
We, we want to make sure that it's.
Yeah.
That we get good plans and know we're, we're making that in everybody's interest. The applicants, that they're going to be on a predictable schedule and that staff is going to get predictable plans or plans to address the comments. And if we get that, then we're all good and we can move along.
Well, and I think you also require the applicant to write in text form how they addressed the comment.
Yes.
And I assume they would say, see such and such sheet.
That's typically how it, sometimes they're a little bit more detailed.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's noted or acknowledged or, yes, seen face to face.
Okay.
So there's, it's differences amongst applicants and engineers and right now, we're working with all of those, but we may have policies with those. Yes, you must itemize out each comment and tell us, tell us how you, how you've done that, but some people don't, still don't do that, so that makes it a little harder on them. And we have, when they speak to revised plans, we have certification forms that they fill out, per staff comment. Or we may change the per staff comment, can these other things, so that's a good change. So we, our, Elizabeth Victoria, they're focusing and our other now consultant reviewers, they're focusing on those changes per certification. This will.
And then add to the comments.
Yeah, yeah, this, this will just really help everybody be on the same page as to expectations of review.
So those, those modifications are outlined there. You can, you can also see that these, these changes are reflected in the current version you have and I think there's even a reference point within these that you want to, if you're following along, keeping score at home. The, well, before I leave, before I leave general fund. So the, the end result of, of these, of these additions that I mentioned before the fees discussion, it would be the $66,000 for the generator, $2,500 for, for Habitat and the $4,900 for the fire department, added to the $19,000 approximately in draw from fund balance that we had in the previous version that you had reviewed on June 10th, gives us a total draw of fund balance of $19,712, which is a lot, again, a lot larger than I'd like, but it is appropriate given the cost and scale of the generator. And, you know, we, again, you've approved the generator, generator previously, but I do think it's important to keep in mind that regardless of what iteration our new town hall takes, we still, to my knowledge and estimate and plan on maintaining the current building for future use, you know, like with police use, in which case a generator is going to be of critical importance. So, so we think that is money from the fund balance that is, that is well spent. If we move on to enterprise fund.
Chris Beck, Chris, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I apologize for interrupting, but quick question on the generator. Do you recall the fuel for that? Natural gas or diesel, I suppose, propane?
I don't know if I even know that. Yeah, I'm not sure.
We can find out.
I'm curious.
Yes.
Thank you.
Enterprise fund, this was a slide that you had seen previously. I would point out the top one again, that being that we are proposing a 2.5% rate increase at the water and sewer. That's for the bullets that we see down below. The water treatment plant has additional chemical and lab supply costs. They're largely inflationary, plus we're doing additional monitoring of unregulated chemicals on top of other work that we expect that, that we'll have to probably revisit over the course of this next fiscal year. So in, in order to keep, to keep that fund sol, fund balance, we're proposing a slight, slight increase. Those, those are actually reflected on this slide that we had, had provided at the previous meeting as well. And that, that fee schedule without comparison of, of the new versus the old is, is in your budget, proposed budget resolution. But if we go to, go to the next slide, more fun with charts and graphs, enterprise fund revenues, it's a pretty simple, pretty simple takeaway on this pie chart in that water charges represent almost half, wastewater charges represent a little bit less than water charges, but again, almost half. You can see reuse water, fully steady, we get approximately $60,000 per year from reuse water. That shows up. We're starting to, we're starting to see some money from credit card fees. We do receive some income from penalties and reconnections. And then the 6% you see there in terms of the transfer from the enterprise capital fund is, I believe, largely reflective of the I and I work that we're not completely doing. So that's in a nutshell what we're spending our money on, the enterprise fund side, or excuse me, that's what we're collecting our money from on the enterprise fund side. What we're spending our money from is the, you know, is even more simple, water treatment, wastewater treatment. 26% in public utility maintenance represents the collection and distribution system or all the pipes that are underground. Debt services paying off current debt, which is considerably lower now than what in previous years, although we can expect that, that environment to change a little bit as well in the future. And that's 16% for administration, which is, is, which is pretty consistent. Our next steps, again, as I indicated, our budget is supposed to be approved by June 30th, 2019. As you're aware, there are things that come up during the course of the year that do require us to adjust the budget, either through expenditures, through revenues and so forth. So this is, this is approved in the document, but as, as we have over the past few years, we, we do get this approved and get it submitted on time and that allows us, that allows us better financial controls moving forward. With that, I guess I would open it up for any comments, questions or concerns that you have. We have some staff here available to answer your questions and.
Questions for Mr. Chris Beck or have you each?
Well, I'm really, I think it's a wise venture to go after this I and I in a strategic way and to track it down at the precipice. One of the most, I think, efficient expenditures we can make in increasing capacity without building a new facility. We just have a lot of stormwater that we're paying for a treat and would be pumping and canter someday soon. We'd like to minimize how much stormwater we pay that treat. So I think it's a really excellent way to rest and increase our capacity, stopping the inflow of that water. The only other item I have is the request that I made last time was to carry over some of the facade grant money from the Main Street program. We've got presently about, anywhere about around 17 facades that are either in process of application or in the works of being applied for. And I think it would take every bit of what we've allocated and returned as well. I'd like to be supportive of our downtown and see if we can get that money back down, but it's about $13,000 that we did not spend this year that I really think we will discover.
Is there a way to do that? Well, what you're proposing to do is you're essentially, if I understand the question, you're proposing to take the money that you did not spend, the slot money this year, you had $15,000 budgeted.
Right.
You spent a little bit less than $13,000. So you want to take that and add that to the $15,000 that we're budgeting this upcoming year?
And honestly, you could just roll it over and tell us that Main Street has the money to back the capital in.
Yeah, but the way we have to reflect on there is by increasing the draw from fund balance. So that will push us over $100,000.
So you'd be taking that 92 and then adding 13. What I would recommend doing, and I think it's great that we're ready to get aggressive with slot improvement again, what I would recommend doing is if there's some trigger that we could observe where if we got to say $10,000 in funded requests, then maybe we revisit the funding issue.
My comment on that is that when people approach me and say, can we do these things? I'm a little bit in a position where I'm able to say, yeah, let's do these things. Not, well, it'll take an amendment and the board will have to approve this and we have to shuffle some money around. We've got it already in the program. I think it's exceptionally valuable to be able to tell somebody who's just thinking about doing it, yeah, we can make this happen. And, you know, when I think about this board priorities from two years ago, downtown was one of the top three. So I think it's worth the investment. Again, we've got a lot of free work out of a dedicated group of volunteers who are trying to make these things happen.
Think about before we started the grant, how different downtown looked.
Well, I'm glad you're saying that.
Quite different, yeah.
Well, you know, it's funny because it's incremental. And I have friends who drive through, who come through for years and they go, oh, wow, big changes are happening. But, you know, living every day, you're like, I'm not...
Yeah, it's still on the shingles.
And they come like, great.
I got one question regarding, how does that affect if you have a tenant comes in and doesn't like the color of their facade front and they've been there six months and they decide they want to change the color? Are we paying for half of the new tenant?
There's a possibility that we would do that, but they have to go through the application process and they have to get bids on it. And they actually have to approve the program as well, so.
Yeah, I'm aware of that because when this person came to the town, Paul Horn and myself went around and proposed it to everybody that I knew. And I think we got about 12, but I'm just concerned, where are these others coming from? Because it's not that many businesses on Main Street.
Well, some of them are multiple facades. So a building that has more than one face facing the street would be more than one facade.
Down on Side Street?
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Movement towards preserving their flying paint?
That's part of the side improvement, but yeah, we have some other things in place.
Which question?
It's facing postal sewers.
Oh, yeah.
Faded, yeah.
On the line, lose water.
It's still, yeah, looks good now, but it's going to deteriorate over time.
Did he flat deal himself or was that inspired by this?
I think it was, I think other people took his drawing. I don't think he was able to do that.
Commissioner Piozzo, do you have a specific proposal?
That we put the unspent money, which is somewhere around $13,100 into the budget for Main Street. Even though that's going to budget.
So over $100,000 here on draw?
Yeah. I don't know that the budget presently reflects a revenue item of the money that Main Street has not spent, but it was required to come back to...
That just goes to fund balance.
Exactly.
But it doesn't show up on the revenue for the upcoming...
Yeah, right, but it is actual dollars that come back into the balance. So I'm just asking to correlate a bit
So what you're proposing is, if you look on page 17, you can see where the, you can see where in code 452, Main Street facade improvement. So what Commissioner Piozzo is proposing... What Commissioner Piozzo is proposing to do is to add, essentially adds money to that line item as an expenditure. So $15,000 plus whatever is unused now.
Yeah, $13,000 and change, I mean,
Would you, that that the presumptive type of situation, a problem, David?
No, it just, it just would increase the draw that we're taking from fund balance. You know, right now, we're projecting a draw of $92,000 and change, and so it would increase that by the $13,000. But there's, you know, I mean, legally, I mean, we're allowed to do what that is, we want to do that.
What would be wrong with what Mr. Friesbeck was discussing is, we would have a later date.
It's going to take a while to make happen. And so it's a heck of a lot easier to get people to spend their time. It takes months and months to pull us off, to know that they've got something that we can commit to them. So to come about and say, well, let me see if I can go get the money. So that's really the reason. And the fact that, again, Main Street's going to return to the town more than $13,000 at the end of this fiscal year. And I'm just asking to roll it back We are having momentum. There are folks who previously were not interested and they have come around as of late and they're enthusiastic about it.
Pass the board feel about Mr. Piozzo's
So if the money is unused, the money that we would allocate here is unused over the course of this next fiscal year, then that money would go back into fund balance, correct?
Yeah.
Much as it would now and/or through return from Main Street back to the town. Unspent money would come back to the town.
Exactly.
And just, I mean, not to be completely obvious, but if your concern is the general fund balance draw, then the obvious solutions to that would be to either increase revenue through property tax increase or make cuts elsewhere. I think you guys are aware, we have it creeped in on a year-to-year basis right now. The cuts, I really wouldn't want to contemplate any cuts that we've added certain licenses this last year into the budget. We need the generator. You know, we need the other items. We start getting into things like pay increases and whether you want a 2% pay increase versus a 5% pay increase from where we're at now, things like that. So those are things you would want to consider if the general fund balance draw is physical. Otherwise, this is more or less what we're dealing with.
Oh, I see. So you had already allocated that money, is what you're saying?
Sorry.
So you're saying that you'd already allocated that $13,000 towards other things?
Well, if it's not used, as Heather was kind of saying, if it's not used much like any other, anything else that we budget in the general fund, if it's not spent, that goes back to the general fund's fund balance, so.
So that's, the budget is based on getting that $13,000 back?
Yeah, it would get that $13,000. That's correct, absolutely.
But that $13,000 wasn't necessarily seen as a contribution to the general fund.
Sounds like you think that...
I don't, no, I don't think.
So what happens is that each fiscal year is separate. So the money that Main Street currently has is under this fiscal year. So the money that gets returned comes under this fiscal year, and that's why it does not show up on this.
However, it is actual cash.
Right, it is going back into, right, it goes back into fund balance. So that money is in fund balance, so if you pull it back out of fund balance, I think it's essentially...
Yeah.
So, you know.
Commissioner Poe is correct that this, that, yes, this budget was crafted with the idea that any unspent return, any unspent money would be returned to fund balance. That's how we do it every year.
Right, but you don't know what that number is right now.
I don't know what number is...
What unspent money is coming back to the fund balance?
Correct.
You don't know that?
Right, because we're not done.
Exactly.
Right. That's why, that's why each budget is totally fresh, is a new, we don't show revenue coming back, you know, we don't show that money coming back. We just have to show the draw. But we have, right now, we have no idea how much we're adding to fund balance at the end of this fiscal year.
But that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so it's not like you took that, you saw that extra $13,000 and then you said, I was bid towards the generator. It's not like something like that?
No, right, correct.
That's what I'm trying to go with.
No, if you want to balance the budget, you'd have to do things like take out...
Exactly. You have to. But this is a flow of funds that's coming into the fund balance for this fiscal year that's not known or accounted for right now, that's available for the next fiscal year. I mean, I'm sure it's not in this category that's unknown revenue for the fund balance at this stage.
Right, I mean, we don't, right, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't find out what our fund balance is.
It's quite liquid?
Pardon?
It's quite liquid?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't find out what our fund balance is until we do our audit in September. So because we still get revenue payments from the state that are for this fiscal year, but we don't get them until August. So we account for them in this fiscal year. So there, it's a sort of flowing timeline in terms of, we don't find out sort of how we balance out until...
But technically, the state requires you to submit a balanced budget in terms of revenues and expenditures. And so in order to balance the budget, you have to optimize like this budget. You have to make a draw from available fund balance. If you do that enough, you go below the 8% threshold that the state requires and the 15% threshold that the town established in its financial policy. We're well over that. So we can, we can...
Right, we are, I mean, taking a draw of $100,000 is not going to, you know, it's not going to hurt our position.
We just feel like we need to make you aware of these things before you do them.
And I also would not like to make it a habit of taking large draws from fund balance.
We've worked pretty hard over the past few years to keep our financial position in excellent shape to do things like build city halls. You know, like Heather says, if we do this enough, we're not as able to do that.
I'm very aware of all of those
We did, is the form motion?
So, yeah, essentially asking to approve the manager's recommended budget ordinance for approval. Do you have another call? Are you just going on the one particular item or you want to go on your real budget?
I have one thing I wanted to...
I'm sorry.
No.
I was way too optimistic.
This is pretty simple. But during the course of just the last few months, I've had several, I've had a couple of people mention to me the fact that we have a $500 commercial deposit required for a water service. And that deposit is used, is held by the town until that commercial business closes and says goodbye. And at that time, it is refunded to you. That's probably not a significant amount of money for big businesses. But for nonprofit groups, such as the Second Bloom Thrift Shop or small service-oriented kinds of groups, and I don't know how we would define that. I would just be hoping that after a period of time, for say, a year or two years of on-time bill payment, that that commercial deposit of $500 could be returned.
With our current system, I don't have a way of tracking without doing it manually. that type, you know, our, we don't have a way of flagging and saying, okay, if this account has, you know, good payment history, we'll refund it. We'd have to track that, that whole menu. I'm hoping that with the updated system that we have, you know, supposed to pay for in the budget, that we would be able to do something at that, and maybe change our policy at that point. Or, that also gets into, you know, I mean, that's another sort of credit policy. I mean, if we were going to do that for businesses, would we also do it for residents? Or would you have different? Another option would be doing a tiered commercial deposit of some type, but it would have to be very specific to either type, like a nonprofit would be maybe different type?
A nonprofit, it, obviously, you're asking for the flat hole one.
Right, we would have to see, yeah, we would have to see something.
But the harder thing is a small business, which, you know, how would you define that?
Right.
By...
But we would have to have a way of, of defining it clearly, because we cannot just favor one business over another one.
Yeah, there would be...
We have to have, we have to have clear groups in terms of...
There would be a criteria.
Yeah.
And I think the criteria makes sense as far as the rationale being that $500 is a lot of money for small organizations and certainly tax-exempt organizations that are for the benefit of the community. So, if, could we define that by talking about gross?
What would the, the fee is there as some kind of mechanism to recompense cost should the company not pay the bill?
Well, I mean, that's what the deposit is.
Yeah, so you could base it on a risk factor associated with how much water you could lose if somebody doesn't pay.
But some of these businesses, we don't know, we, we have no way of knowing ahead of time.
No, but the meters speaks to how much water they can conceivably use.
Mm-hmm.
I just thought, let me try to correlate with two costs.
I mean, we could, right, we could propose, we could have a different deposit rate for different size meters. I'm not sure. I would have to, I mean, I would have to do some analysis and see what would be a reasonable structure.
But you'll know when, when the new accounting software comes in this summer, exactly.
Well, we won't get it installed at some, I mean, we're selecting, it probably won't get installed till next year, you know. I mean, it takes, it takes a while.
Well, for those of you who were left behind, it's, we're not, we'll no longer be here. Let's, let's think about that and think of a way that we could define a small business to $500 would mean a tremendous amount. I mean, I've got to tell you that, that the Second Bloom Thrift Shop is operating on somebody else's, somebody else's dime, because they were generous enough to say, will you just go ahead and keep our deposit? Because we didn't have $500. So, so we pay them and they pay our bill. It's, I mean, it just really came to roost. Is there any residential deposit required?
Yes, yeah, it's $50.
$50?
It's $50 if you supply your social security number, it's $100 if you don't.
If you supply...
Your social security number. Because if you don't supply your social security number, we cannot, and you, and you leave us with funds, we cannot give them a statement without your social security number.
Do you levy against them?
Well, remember you passed, we submit, we submit our debt to the state and it can, it gets, it gets applied to their state...
Their main fund.
But we need a social security number.
Those are for the linked accounts now.
Yeah, not, not current accounts, those are accounts that are closed and they have not paid. And we give them 30, I mean, we give them three months, you know, we send them reminders. But that is something, I mean, I'm, I wouldn't be prepared to change the, or what's in the budget document today for the deposit, because I just don't have information on how to, you know, break it down into different categories, but that's something that we can look into.
Why don't we just leave it that you'll research it and, and it will try to figure out a way to define the small business category, but that with the board seemingly agree on nonprofits, that nonprofits should qualify for either a lesser amount or a refund after a period of proper safety. Notting, not nodding?
Oh, I, I strongly favor the nonprofit concept, I think half the fee or, or some, you know, something in that direction. I think it's a great idea and I'll administratively, I'd imagine, it'd be fair to strike forward because it's just a 501(c)(3), you present your nonprofit status paperwork, but I, I'm kind of frightened to imagine what it would be like for Heather to have to try and take on figuring out small businesses, medium businesses, large businesses, and looking at what tax returns, and yeah, that's, that's a little mess. We may need to go there. I think this board feels pretty strongly that, that we want to, I've gotten the sense in the past, let me just say, that we want to support small businesses, we want to try and incentivize small businesses, especially in our downtown area. But...
Maybe there's a way to make payments, an extra payment until, of course, that's probably manual too, though, toward the deposit. So having to pay it all upfront, but anyway.
Seems like it all depends on the accounting software. Let me get that in. Let's see if this board, remember Mayor Perry's...
Wherever wish. There are probably, I, I doubt there's too many nonprofits. And, and the other thing that you and I talked about at one time that couldn't be done with the accounting software was the fact that for some environmental groups, they are urging people to either round up their water bill and pay the next higher dollar or next higher $5 amount, or, or a $2 or $5 surcharge. We talked about both of those, and neither of those could be done, but according to our, our software, but maybe we could explore those kinds of things at some future point.
I guess Jack Kelly would count as a nonprofit.
Yeah. I think you'd be really surprised how many nonprofits are in this town in ETJ, because we did a study through the fire department on how much revenue and how much services we were doing through nonprofits, and it was millions of dollars in property that were getting free services and paying no taxes.
This is just, this is just profit.
Yeah. I'd be glad to trade one month's of my water bill for $500, so no problem.
Are there further questions about the budget? Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the budget with the increase in the Main Street program to approximately $13,001,000. And go to the three times review. Yep.
I already made a note of that.
Okay.
Is there a second to Michael's motion?
Second.
Second, and by Wilson Foley, those in favor please indicate by standing in line.
I'm in.
Those opposed, motion carries. We've tried to the latter two.
Just one second. Mr. Greaseback, in the future, I think it would be most helpful if this were contextualized by lower to higher, higher to lower.
Sure, yeah, I'd love to play around with that idea. Thank you.
We've, we've tried to get to a, a new category of our business, which is board directive. And late this afternoon, there was a wonderful suggestion by John Bonnet with respect to, I've forgotten the topic.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're talking about pesticides, herbicides, and other various nasty toxic stuff.
I thought I was talking about pesticides.
Sure. No, no, no. We're good. Thank you, Ms. Alice.
Well, my original, my original thought was that we would do a resolution that talked about the scientific studies and the, and the health concerns related to the use of certain herbicides. And, and when John Bonnet called me, he indicated that, that a far better thing to do, far, far better thing to do, would be to enter into an integrated pesticide management program. And so, he suggested this, signature document, that somewhat incorporates my concerns in the one that we've looked at in our packages, but not acting on for the last two meetings. But what it does, John, would you agree that, that a way to characterize this is it puts, it puts the issue with staff so that staff can assess their own necessity for these kinds of pesticides, so that, for example, John, John Petit would assess the value of using certain things and getting information about that in respect to the public board's office?
Yes. Yes.
Is that...
Absolutely, yeah.
Is that a good way to, to put this?
Generally speaking, the idea of integrated pest management, I was surprised to learn that EPA and, and many, many state laws consider pesticides to be all-inclusive of herbicides and fungicides. I thought pesticides were just for killing bugs, but the category of chemicals, they would consider it to refer to herbs, weed killers and antifungals too, so if you want to get rid of mold, we'll do. But the important thing here is that there's 30 years, certainly, no, 20, 25 years of professional expertise and training development in this concept of integrated pest management. And our county extension agents are trained to train folks in integrated pest management. And the, the basic idea is you just want to use a concerted, careful way of thinking about the application of these chemicals, and when and where you need to take care of human health and safety, and when and where it is feasible to use other methods, or even preferable to use other methods, like physical removal or control of vectors or elimination of the attraction for, for bugs. You want to get rid of the food, right? Or get rid of the water for the bugs, rather than spraying a whole bunch of bug spray and cut off their source of food and water. So, with respect to Mayor Perry's great concern and I think appropriate focus on glyphosate, because of the compelling emerging science on this subject, I did take a few of those, whereas statements include those, in this other document. This much longer document comes from the city of North Miami, and they've already passed this into law, or as a, as a resolution of law. And what I would recommend to this board, if, if Mayor, if you're open to this, is that I would recommend that this board consider asking staff to respond with comments, with suggestions to this document in some amount of time. Because I think needs to be staffed and...
Yeah, I agree with that. And I, and I had a question too, when I, when I read it, you know, when you read it the first time, and my main concern was sewer easements and stuff like that, that we really don't have any traffic on but the maintaining of them, that, that possibly we could still use some type of spray or chemicals on sewer easements or railways or something like that. I just didn't want to know that we was going to completely do away with, you know, how much labor that was going to cost us extra to keep things clean like this. That's, that's my main concern.
Yeah, I was concerned about it too, especially when I talked with the people that run the country farm and home store, who said that, that, you know, it depends on the project you, you got, to whether or not you need, you know, a really effective broadleaf kind of herbicide. And this, this way, the staff can make their own decisions and, although I must say that I was so pleased, because I ran into John Petit the other day, and, and he was very excited about looking into non-glyphosate herbicide, and, and actually had somebody coming to introduce product to it. So, this is the way we need to be thinking, and, and it, it doesn't ban anything, I, I think I misused that word when I first proposed this. It's not a ban, it is a judgment call that needs to be made by staff and, and I think we'll all be better off. So you then ask staff to take this bit?
Look at this program, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole document, that's the idea. And if it needs to be edited or changed or modified, I think, I'd like to hear this thought, department heads.
John, is this the document from North Miami?
Yeah.
Which is for a substitute?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Kind of, it's for a universal, finer...
And the whereas is...
Yes, there's three whereas's that came from Mayor Perry's document.
Okay.
And, and I think I would like to take a moment just to pause on that, because, you know, the, my understanding of the, the emerging science and the dispute that remains, we have a distinct divide right now. Folks in the university systems are very conservative about these new studies, and they're largely dismissive of them. And it's because the majority, the great bulk of the studies say that this, these glyphosate containing herbicides are fine, they're safe, they're the safest we've got, they're the best tool we've got. The problem that I have with that is the vast majority of the studies were funded by Monsanto directly, or indirectly through the funds that they give to land-grant universities to do that work. And the, the science that's emerging that doesn't relate to cancer, but that talks about the problems with glyphosate in other regards, for example, there's very clear, unarguable evidence that it changes the soil microbiome. And what we're learning about soil science is that the health of soil, the fertility of soil, is wrapped up in the number of microorganisms, the diversity of microorganisms, the, the bugs in the soil. By the way, many of those microorganisms that are found in healthy soil are also found in our healthy guts. And there is emerging evidence, not much of it in peer-reviewed science, that many of the autoimmune disorders may be caused by, or linked to glyphosate. So, I, the point that I made with, one edit actually, that I included in Mayor Perry's whereas statement, is that this is one, two, three, four, five, number five, to emphasize that this is out of the precautionary principle, that we're motivated to consider this integrated pest management. So.
Thank you, John, for your suggestion and for the research that went into this. Appreciate your great...
Thank you for your leadership on it.
Do we need or have a motion, or should we just ask staff to review and then report that and count off that?
So is there any particular staff?
I'll take a second.
Okay.
Thanks.
And, and to tell the facts, I still have not myself drafted anything. This is a young man, I've got to say, that interviewed me this morning, this afternoon, with our scout, Evan Crowe, just amazed, one of the things he wanted to tell was about the plastic bag. He went on for some time discussing the health effects and the litter and all of that, and then he said, what are you going to do about it?
Wow, working on it.
We're working on it. And, and, and he wanted to know what, what I would suggest about getting his word out. And I said, well, the press, the, our press in here this evening, and great kudos to them as well, to improve a long agenda.
Great tenacity.
I encouraged the young man to write a letter to the editor, and that then perhaps others of us could respond and talk about what the town is interested in doing. Likewise, I've encouraged him and his mother, when they shop at Foodline, to stop and say, you know, we, we need to remember our bags, first of all, and we need to speak to the people at the grocery. And I, I said to Evan, it wasn't just the plastic bags that you take, the, take the produce out in, but it's the incredible amount of wrapped, plastic that's wrapped around fruits and vegetables and, and every other thing. I bought a jar of Newman's Own spaghetti sauce the other day, and I thought to myself, well, if there was anybody that would do things right, it would be Paul Newman, right? But they've changed just recently from glass to plastic. And, and we all are great at that, when we drop something out of the refrigerator. I'll never forget spending about two hours cleaning up a jar of mayonnaise that dropped out of the fridge. So, we all have things to do, and, and I will personally go forward with helping the young Evan to give publicity to this, taking this call. I don't think there's anything we can vote on right now, because I don't think, I think we need to get the act of, of, of Foodline.
So does Evan live here this time?
He does not. He lives in Prior Chapel.
Okay, in the chapel?
Yeah. Anyway. Is there a motion to, to, oh, excuse me, Commissioner, Commissioner, sir, Jake Carroll?
Just want to thank Mr. Groosebeck on the budget and Heather. One thing that I didn't mention, I didn't write it down, was possibly maybe in the next budget is some type of merit raises for employees, maybe through, what am I, what's the supervisor or the department head? You know, you may have a, just doing a cross-the-board 2%, 2.5%. Sometimes if you've got an outstanding employee, it doesn't hurt to boost morale a little bit up in, maybe if you want to give an extra 2% or whatever we may be able to do down the road, just to kind of help boost morale a little extra. And I know we do, we do these grass for taxes and all like that, and maybe sometime we may want to look in how we are with our employees, with local municipalities also. I sure won't hate to lose any, you know what I mean, going to Cary or Apex or somewhere else.
Yeah, we can look at a, a merit-based, what you're talking about is a merit-based system, and there are ways to, there are ways to do that for pay increases. One of the things that you guys may not be completely aware that we do, do, is, is recertifications.
Right.
We now increase pay for certification.
Exactly.
We have been very explicit that, you know, encouraging that and same time we budget for it ahead of time, but if one pops up during the budget year and we can accommodate it, we accommodate it.
Yeah, that's good.
So, yeah, there are different ways to do that. That's, that's something we can look at and incorporate in the future.
One other thing I had is Miss Parish that lives on 152 Goldston Road. She had called me a couple of times regarding the water that has washed her driveway out. It's just before you get to the turn to the right to go Old Goldston Road, but I know that's a DOT right away. It's, her drive is just right off of the Goldston Road. Soon you turn down, she lives down there on the right. It's washed her road several times. I did speak to Tom O'Teague and he said he was going to try to call DOT regarding that. I saw him on the street yesterday, not yesterday, this morning. So just to be aware of that. It did wash it pretty, and what happened when they repaved that Goldston Road, they didn't raise that curb anything on that side of the street. And it does wash pretty heavy. That's all I have.
I was just going to mention that I wish I thought of the last time we should do a resolution about Jean Reed, who passed away recently. She was such an icon in this community for a long time and I have fond memories of when I worked at Chatham Habitat for Humanity, she liked to wait till the very end of the year, even when she was in her 90s. We kind of expected her, she would come and knock on the door and hand us a check at the end of the year. But she's done a lot for this community over the years and I don't know, it seems I'm out there, just wanted to acknowledge her.
I thank Brian and staff for cleaning up page Vernon Park. The pagers look much better. And whoever did the sidewalk replacement work is quite skilled. It's as if there were, you know, the bricks that were missing.
Oh.
I mean, you can't tell that there was anything ever wrong there, so it looks great. Thank you.
I wasn't optimistic about that. Brickwork makes me nervous.
Well, there was a slug of concrete there that had to break out and so I was expecting something a little bit uneven, but it was random. Or it looks just as old as the rest of the brick around there.
I have a question about that park. I know the original design called for a fountain there.
And a tree went in this place.
So that's where the tree is?
Yeah.
Eric?
I don't have anything particular other than the budget document and I do appreciate that you did not actually anticipate any taxes at this particular juncture. I appreciate you all the hard work on your behalf and that we can continue to go forward with our budget and work on behalf of the county and the board.
John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Groosebeck. Great work on the budget as always. I also want to express gratitude and praise. Sorry, Mr. Jones has left already, but the old Ford dealership looks better. Very much appreciate Mr. Jones having asked the developer to clean up that old Ford dealership. Also, big praise for, this is a belated thank you, on Leslie Court, the neighbors there, they were very thankful that staff was responsive and effective in stopping the water leak about six months ago. However, the HOA, an HOA board member brought it to my attention that there's still a gravel hole there. And our request, your question is, when might that be, that's what, Leslie Court?
We'll get it taken care of.
Okay. Leslie Court, yeah, in Forest. And Mayor Perry, you had asked about the Blue Star Highway sign and I wanted to revisit that, find out if we could put the word out to, did that located and restored in the town hall?
We haven't, we haven't located it, broken. The top third of it broke off, so it's in others' office right now. So we're looking at a way, what's that?
It's aluminum?
I think it had a brass bit on the bottom of it.
I can show you. I don't have a key to the office.
Yeah, it's old.
Show you, I don't know what material it is, honestly, but it, it...
I doubt so.
It's, it's about, it's about this thick and it's about this big and it's, it's not impossible to pick up, but I wouldn't want to walk home with it. So we're trying to figure out whether we can just simply glue it together or whether we have to review other ones, so.
Thank you. And was effort made to reach out to the post of Masters regarding the Hillsborough Street 1551 widening of the house? I'd like to make sure that they're...
Yeah, aside, yeah, aside from the work that we did with Community Alliance, no, I haven't, I personally haven't spoken with anybody I can find know.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Getting them engaged in that planning process, making sure that whoever's here to you, make sure that they know where to send comments because nailboxes are going to be removed and I'm told that there are already across the street nailboxes and we should get that into the planning process. Whether or not some neighbors might be able to collaborate and get joint nailboxes, that's clearly the post of Masters.
I'll make sure they're under our responsibility.
A lot of different things for them to think about. And it's too late to bring this up as a full conversation, but I hope that we can discuss at a future meeting, the speed limit on Hillsborough Street. I continue to hear concerns about that and an interest in lowering the speed limit. My understanding is that it's 35 in front of Lowe's Hardware and then it goes up to 45 and then it comes back down to 35 and then to 25, so.
If it's low, it's 55.
If it's 55?
Yeah, it is.
With stoplights?
Yeah.
It's not 55 all the time.
And that's the one?
It's 25.
Right, but when you get to the light at Lowe's heading north, it starts out as 55.
The thing is, at the school, at the school hours, it doesn't want to go up to 55.
And north of the highway.
Better slow down.
They go, shit. No.
Again, I, it's too late for us to have the conversation now, but maybe put that on the agenda for a conversation. And I think Ms. Goodson had some thoughts on it as well.
You better check for the clock, it's early.
Not for me.
I notice by 12 o'clock.
Well, in that case, Jay, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion, do we adjourn, stand and leave?
That is a yes.